First item on the agenda is adoption of the student. Do you pay a motion to approve the agenda?
Move for the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Jefferson, any discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Gomit?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
First item on the agenda, be here in public, anyone like to address the board this time? Few instructions first, five minutes, if you please state your name and address, you must be a citizen of Holmes County to address the board.
Even if I'm related to someone that is in Holmes County, I'm still not allowed to speak to the board. I have some remarks that I'd like for someone to be able to read, thank you, Karen.
I have to do some paraphrasing now, Perry Stevenson with 1893 North Holmes Creek Road, here in Holmes County, gonna have to paraphrase a little, this was written up, assuming that Sally would be able to speak. Have a son and a wife who teaches at Bethlehem, I have several concerns regarding my wife, Ms. Susan Stevenson, she has taught at Bethlehem for twenty-seven and a half years, she's been suspended from her teaching duties twice this school year, charged with gross insubordination. When she was first suspended, we heard that several school board members were told that Ms. Stevenson had locked students out of her classroom. During class time, classroom doors are supposed to be locked. Susan's first period class is English III, she has nineteen eleventh graders in that class, nearly half of them were either absent or tardy every day, there are at least six interruptions by tardy students every day first period. Susan finally told the students to knock on the door when they were tardy and wait because she had a convenient moment to open the door for them. We're talking about having tardy students wait one or two minutes for their teacher to open the door, not being permanently locked out of the classroom. Having a student open the door would clearly be too disruptive to that child's instructional time, which is why Susan would open the door. One morning a couple of tardy students didn't want to wait, so they went to the office and claimed that Ms. Stevenson had locked them out of the room. On December 12th, 2014, in that first period class, tardy students turned in their late work, Mrs. Stevenson's longstanding rule, twenty-seven and a half years, was that she very rarely accepted late work. In addition, one tardy student didn't have his textbook, Ms. Stevenson's rule was that students come to class prepared, and it was when we were in school, so she did not allow them to go to his locker. That student left the room without permission to get his textbook and was then sent to the office. Susan was asked to meet with Principal Jones in his office during her planning period. Principal Jones told Susan that she must accept the late work turned in by students that day. He then told her that it's not reasonable to expect students to come to her class on time. He also said it's not reasonable to expect students to come prepared for class. If a student forgets his textbook, she is to allow that student to immediately go to his locker. Furthermore, if a student needs to use the bathroom, even at the beginning of the period, she is to allow the student to go. Susan's rule had been for students to wait until half the period was over before asking to leave the room for any reason. When Susan complained that most of her rules had just been thrown out the window, Principal Jones said that the state had tied our hands concerning attendance issues. Susan replied that the state statutes give a good deal of leeway to each school district to devise an attendance policy that addresses absences and tardies. Principal Jones then said that our hands are tied because absences at Bethlehem are not marked excused or unexcused. Susan told him that state statutes require each school to keep track of excused and unexcused absences, and she asked the principal how they were getting away with not doing that. He told her that the county doesn't do it, and he is doing what the county does. On a Friday, she let the principal know that she was aware of the principal's noncompliance with state statutes, and on the following Monday, she was suspended. Time was pretty interesting. On Monday, December 15th, Ms. Stevenson informed her classes of the changes that Principal Jones had made in her classroom rules, an expectation, and used his own words in telling students. She also told them that her remaining rules may be changed at any moment. In an effort to retain some authority over her students, she told them that late work would be accepted but points deducted. In addition, she told her students that the last person who skipped her class was not disciplined, but if she found out anyone skipped, that student would receive zeros for work due that day and work assigned that day. The last person who left her room without permission received no punishment, but if anyone else wanted to do that, the student could just spend the rest of the period in the office. A few minutes into her seventh period class, Ms. Stevenson was summoned to the principal's office. In the office were Principal Jones, Superintendent Dixon, Deputy Superintendent Goodman, and District Employee Carmen Bush. Superintendent told Ms. Stevenson that she was being suspended for gross insubordination. She asked twice in what way she had been insubordinate, but Dixon refused to tell her. He told her to get her personal belongings, leave the campus, and not return until further notice. She was escorted to her room by Goodman and Bush. She returned to her room with sixth graders, including our son, and gathered her belongings. Was the time on this purposely done in an effort to humiliate her in front of her students and colleagues?
Period of time.
Thank you, ma'am.
How much do you have, lady?
Um, about halfway through. The week that she returned from her suspension, she had a parent conference. She made a statement to that parent that little was being done about tardies. Subsequently, Mrs. Stevenson was charged with gross insubordination again and suspended without pay for a week. It apparently did not matter that she made the statement, that after she made the statement to the parent, she immediately clarified by telling him what had been done the first nine weeks, namely that the administrator had a conference with the student and later with the parent concerning the tardies. As a teacher and parent of a child, in Mrs. Sally's words, in the neighboring school system in Washington County, it's not handled that way. While on the subject of tardies, I think I should make clear that we're not talking about a couple of students with five or six tardies. At the time of that parent conference, the student in question had been tardy twenty-one days in the first nine weeks and twenty-four days the second nine weeks, in addition to some absences the parent was unaware of. Some other statistics from that class, in the first semester, one student was absent eighteen days and tardy seven, another was absent nineteen days and tardy ten, another was absent eighteen days and tardy thirty-two days, another absent nineteen days and tardy thirty-one, another absent twenty and tardy forty-one days. Why is this important? Susan's held accountable for what those students learn and what they score on the upcoming statewide assessment. Half of her teacher evaluation is based on what her students score on the state test. How can she prepare the students for tests, for college, for her career when they don't even show up in class? She was told by the principal that her most basic expectations were unreasonable. She has been told to open the door immediately when a student knocks, to allow students to leave the classroom when they ask, to accept late work and not deduct points from it. To my knowledge, no other teachers at Bethlehem have been told these things, only Susan. From my point of view, she seems to have been singled out for harassment. If I were in her shoes, I would consider Bethlehem High School to be a hostile work environment. School board members may have little input when it comes to personnel issues, but you do have input when it comes to policies and rules. I would hope that you would support teachers who enforce rules and high expectations, and it's my hope that you would support Susan in those very endeavors. Few more observations, each time Susan argued her point concerning the rules or lack of rules, she then complied with what Mr. Jones told her. Now, noncompliance where the principal wishes wins might by someone, somewhere be considered insubordinate, but Susan complied. The so-called investigation after the allegation of Mrs. Stevenson locking students out of her classroom and refusing to allow them inside included only the principal's handpicked choice of students instead of all of the students in the classroom, and the one person who was never asked about the incident, Susan. Is that a proper investigation? Not anywhere else. If a student went to a principal in another school system, they would probably want to know a little bit more about what was going on. But Mr. Jones told Susan that not opening the door immediately when a student knocks on it constitutes a security risk. She then asked how allowing students to leave the classroom whenever they pleased, to go to the restroom, their lockers, et cetera, was not a security risk. His response was something along the lines of, "It's not logical, but that's how it is." Illogical or insane. See any common sense there? I think what needs to be investigated is which teachers in this county are having to adhere to these same rules that Susan has been told to abide by. If other teachers are not being required to comply with the rules that Jones and Dixon expect of Susan, then this principal and superintendent have created a hostile workplace and are harassing Susan. How can she raise a question about anything having to do with Holmes County school system or Bethlehem when they don't comply with state statutes? Seems to me that Jones and Dixon are abusing the power of their positions to try to force the teacher out of the Holmes County school system so that their noncompliance with state mandates is not brought to light. Now, everyone knows, and I've stayed before, Susan's been teaching there since twenty-seven and a half years. At the end of that retirement, Holmes County does offer a $16,000 retirement benefit. We have known of teachers being fired two months before that was, we're two years away. See any correlation there? If you don't want to spend the money on a teacher who spent her entire career in the same county, what does that say about the county and about our loyalty to our teachers? Susan has been suspended two times. She's afraid to speak at work, she's not gonna speak tonight. If a student can go to the principal claiming anything that they wish and the principal responds with another suspension, she'll be out of a job. That's a lot of power to put into a student's hands, especially if students are always believed and the teacher is not only not believed but never even asked. If the students are not faced with any negative repercussions for their tardiness and absences from class, the teacher can't teach those students. Teacher can't teach those students, the students will very likely score poorly, not on just classroom tests but on their state assessments. If students score poorly on state assessments, the VAN data, which constitutes half of a teacher's evaluation, will cause a teacher to have a low overall evaluation. And when that happens, every teacher who has a less than stellar evaluation will have grounds to sue the superintendent and the school district. By not requiring students to attend class, the superintendent and the only principal are partially to blame for those students not learning what they need to know to pass their courses and their state assessments. Teachers are not to blame if the students aren't there. If I were a member of this school board, I would want to go on record as being against this superintendent's policy regarding attendance. Otherwise, you're complicit in this major dereliction of policy and just common sense. I urge you to do what's right and demand that the superintendent rescind both suspensions, reimburse Susan for a week's lost wages, and demand that he and Principal Jones cease the harassment and hostility directed at Susan. And I know some of you other teachers may be sitting back thinking, "I'm glad it's not me," you could very well be next. We can't regard any of these issues as a personal front to the superintendent, but there is no insubordination in doing what you're told and complying with the rules that you're told, and just having common sense. School board, I ask you to do the right thing, no matter how difficult it may be, to side with a mere teacher and not the superintendent. I ask you to restore confidence in the governing of this school district. Thank you for your time and attention.
My name is Drew Price, I live at 317 Highway 160. Appreciate the opportunity to stand. I just, I'm standing here as a parent on behalf of Ms. Stevenson. Tamara and I have had several children attend Bethlehem, and we've had several children enter her class, so I'm speaking from personal experience, kind of through our children. We get comments from our children over the years. So, I want the superintendent and the school board members to know that all the reports that we've gotten over the years regarding Ms. Stevenson have been positive reports. She holds the students accountable, she teaches, she holds them high expectations, she has high standards. And the quality of the education in her class is high, is good. Well, that's extremely valuable to me as a father and as a parent. I hope it's valuable to you, I know it is, but I would ask you to consider, as a superintendent, as a school board, what should be our position regarding Ms. Stevenson? If she's been a good teacher, blessings to her, both in and out of the class, she spends not only a lot of time in class, she's one of the teachers that, she's at most of the student activities, most of the sports activities, she supports students both in and out of the class, commits a lot of personal time. So, if that's the case, if that's true, and I'm here to say that it is from personal experience, also I've talked to a number of other parents, I have a sister, I asked her opinion today, my sister Paulette, I had children there for years, she said Ms. Stevenson was an excellent teacher. If that's the case, we, and you as a board and as a district, maybe should see this as an opportunity to look at the district policy, look at the school policy, the district position that you're taking right now, the school's position, and ask yourself, is this an opportunity to set some things right? Is this an opportunity to support a good teacher that's done a lot of good for twenty-seven years?
Abby O'Walter, 1308 Gavin Road, Holmes County. I just wanted to say that Ms. Stevenson is an amazing teacher, she happens to be my favorite, so I've learned so much in her class this past year, it is unreal. It's probably the class I've learned the most in, to be honest. I love English, and Ms. Stevenson makes my class really enjoyable. And I, I don't know what has happened other than what I've just heard, and I really believe with all my heart that Ms. Stevenson is one of the best teachers there is, and I believe she, I hope y'all make the right decision because Ms. Stevenson is great. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Deborah Mosser, 1690, Mosser Lane, Blackfeet. I'm a former student of Ms. Stevenson, graduated Bethlehem in ninety-six, I graduated salutary in my class. During the time that I had Ms. Stevenson as a teacher, she was always consistent, she was known as one of the stricter teachers, and if you were a student that didn't care or wasn't respectful, then those were the students that may have something negative to say about her, but the ones that were there to learn and wanted to learn, like me, they appreciated that she treated every student fairly, no matter what their last name was, no matter who was in the office that they were akin to or whatever, and that's something that I really appreciate growing up, because sometimes those things, whether you intend to or not, comes in the way of kids getting a good education. My son now has had Ms. Stevenson this year, and I was very disappointed that she was taken out of the classroom. Like Mr. Stevenson said before, she's held responsible, and she's looked at in the kids' test scores, you know, reflect back on her teaching, and she was taken out of their room, and my fear is that when the writing test comes up this year for him in the sixth grade, his score would be affected because a teacher that's a very, you know, awesome teacher was taken out of his classroom, and it seemed like to me, from what I've heard here, for reasons that were not, didn't, you know, warrant her being suspended, and he was given a substitute. I happened to run into the substitute and ask her about some makeup work that he needed to make up, and she said, "I'm just here to get through until after Christmas holidays. I'm not really doing anything with the kids, I'm just trying to get through." And I told me, you know, taking her out of the classroom is, you know, gonna affect him, now he's in a different class for six weeks, but after Christmas break, when she was again suspended, he said, "I gotta," I said, "What are you doing in writing?" I asked him about every single class, "What are you doing in writing this week?" "Well, we're not doing much of anything, we've got a substitute again." And I think it's a horrible situation when you take an awesome, professional, respectable teacher out of the classroom, when they're so hard to find, it's hard to find a teacher that's gonna stand up to students. Kids are gonna do what they're let, they're gonna take the easiest route. If you allow them to come without their supplies, then they're gonna come without their supplies. If you don't hold them accountable for being tardy, they're not gonna be on time, that's just how kids are. And, you know, the rules that she was asking the principal to support her in upholding with the kids were not something that were, you know, out of the ordinary, and I just want y'all to take that into consideration, you know, why she was, what rules that she was asking to be upheld by the principal, and what the lack of support is gonna do for teachers like her, you know, in school, they're gonna be afraid of all those rules, it's gonna be a domino effect, and I don't wanna see that happen, but thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda, our fourth, fifth.
As I present the committee selection of our construction management company, we've got the score sheet, and we selected Colpepper Hotel Essie for the construction management of the K-8 school of our family.
You saw the recommendation, and you have the score sheet in front of you. Do you pay a motion to approve the Colpepper with the construction management company? Motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Cherry, can you fill us in a little bit about this process, how I wasn't there, and you tell us about the process?
I wasn't, but I'm actually Mr. Johnson, too, he was on the committee.
We also have representatives from the CEREA and from Culpepper here who would be asking specific questions.
Do you tell us how the process worked for our selection?
Yeah, we had Culpepper Allstate and Perry McCaul came to us, and they presented what they were gonna do for us building New Skid, their construction team, how they were gonna use the, our community, we would have contractors they would use, they were asked how they were gonna use those, and each one explained to us how they would use those, and just building like a building to meet the schedule that we need to have our teachers in the classroom in 2017. We were asked how they would stage it, you know, the construction part of it, the type of structure it would be, and they were specifically asked too about the working with the phase funding like we have, where it'd be funded every year by the legislature, and the ability to meet that budget. I know some places they've had contractors come in and build a school, and they didn't have the funds to wait on the funding from the state, and they may have to stop the project until the funding from the state out there. All three of them, we interviewed, they said that they would have been able to meet the budget, and that's pretty much how it was, and they got thirty minutes to present to us, and then we had questions, we asked some questions about different items, and we determined that Culpepper would be the company that we'd like to go with, and all three of them, they were a good company, I think, but what we saw, I think we were the culpeper of our construction management.
And we, how many started out, how many companies started?
We had seven, initially we had seven companies submit the proposals, we shortlisted off those rip proposals to three, and three came and presented to us and made the recognition. That is a state accepting role out of this, and we voted on that back up in conference in time, so, I mean, it was a really big, it was a very difficult thing to do because they were all good. Yeah, and it was, we really dug deep in our discussions as a group after they left to escorting, and they took it down.
Have they built any schools around here?
Yes, ma'am. We actually went to Tallahassee, Long Charles High School, it's a two-story big school. I believe somebody could do two stories and large.
Every one of these, these three companies here live all over.
They had lots of experience with actual special facilities just like this one. You know, schools are our special facilities, and they were a special facilities by the states, that's what I'm saying. They all understood the process, which is important, so I feel real good about this issue.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to say that I feel like this is one of the biggest challenges as a board that we'll do, is to select a team who is capable of completing an awesome project, probably one of the biggest projects that Holmes County has ever had. I was not only committee, but I did come to the meeting when these three people presented. I was very pleased with the business knowledge and the technical skills, and I was very impressed with the individual and the team leadership skills that I saw. There are several things in this building, this school, that were very important to me, that was evident at the presentation. They had all done, really, I thought, a very good job in, done a physical study on the design and the planning. A warranty was very important to me, and this was one of the things that they would stand behind their work, if something is not right, they would come and fix it. Another thing, as Mr. Johnson said, that was high on my list, was local participation, not only with contractors but with our businesses here, in the community, if we could buy materials and that sort of thing from them. Another thing was the safe work environment, very high on my list, because we do have a campus out there with students on it, and it was very important to me that that be in a safe, controlled environment, and they said they would be looking at our schedule and our calendar and coordinating things so that our students would be very safe out there, it would be fenced, it would be locked. And another thing is that they would enforce a drug-free, tobacco-free work site, and that is very important to me. So, as far as the committee, I think, in looking over the rankings, they felt the same way that I did, that we had, it was tied competition, we had great abilities and high qualities, and I'm just very excited about moving forward with this project and looking forward to having a great groundbreaking with students and faculty and community involved in it.
Any other questions to come? What is the estimated day of groundbreaking, do we have that yet, or?
We're working on it, trying to coordinate schools, some legislative folks, and the hospital governors, there's a lot of people to worry, I mean, we're trying to get down this responsibility in goodwill, so that's what we're doing.
I have a question on the warranty she mentioned, what kind of warranty? Five years?
Which is under the Estes statute.
Is that everything, like from central units to?
They're shaking their head, they don't believe in the law, seem like they're in trouble.
That was actually, I mean, that was a tremendous day, because that's like five years of snow, just like the cold inside the car.
We're gonna try, we're gonna try to finish the queue in what, May?
April, May, 2017.
And that gives us the summer of, between then and this, the summer that the teachers can move into the school, plus people can be trained to take care of themselves during that period.
There's a lot of new things with this, things are changing with our efforts, there's a lot of new things to do.
Any other questions to come?
Oh, I mean, I got, I'm excited about it.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Gomit?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Time five, the ministry program, Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the, um, the policy provisions for winter two thousand fourteen.
Heard the recommendation, and he has a, uh, devised package. We pay a motion to approve.
I move with first being school board policy provisions.
A question by Mr. Justice, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I feel like we need to have some kind of a workshop to go over these policy changes. There's, there's things in here that I would like to discuss and have stress, since the cell phone, it's gone from being turned off to just mark through. So evidently, you can have your cell phone turned off at school. And especially with, like, this group brought up, the tardies, the absences, we need to go over that with a fine tooth comb, comb, and, um, get some of this iron out before we vote on this. I, I would like to tackle it and vote on it at a later date. I have to make a motion for that. How, how often so long?
I'll second that one. A motion by Ms. Colmets and a second by Mr. Johnson to pay. Any discussion on paper?
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm concurred with Mr. Colmets. I've, I've got some questions, uh, and this is a lot of information to get on the third. You know, and I, I'm thinking to get that in.
Well, there's about a four, five hundred pages of that.
Yeah.
So it, it may be something, and, and I agree, I mean, we're signing off on that. We're giving our stamp of approval, so we all need to know exactly what's in there. So we may have to take it in. Seconds and work through the discussion.
And, and that's one of the things that I had suggested over a year ago, is that we start, you know, it, it probably take us a long time, but in our workshops, take a section per workshop and go through that section, um, to see, you know, uh, now, I'm, I'm not sure how often these have to be revised.
We usually get updates from P.A.C.
And a lot of these things that are in here, uh, like the hazing and that kind of stuff, has just come into.
They're based on the statutes that were passed.
Because of the statutes that's just been passed. But, um, some of it, not all of it is based on that, right?
Most of all of it is.
The vast majority of the answers had to be that, given this statement, so we can, we can draw this, 'cause we know it's gonna be, most of the changes that were done this year were done because the legislature changed things last legislative session, that's where most of it comes from, so, I mean, the vast majority of this really comes from, about ninety-nine percent, so. We could, you just have to have, uh, different ministers here and different departments to explain, uh, with cell phone, okay? Why don't we do that with cell phones? Why don't we?
The second, the discussion.
I think it's, well, because I've been on the board three years, and we, and this is going on our third year, and we've never, you know, just gone through them and looked for them. I would like to do that.
Any other discussion?
Well, for the record, that's what we do, is policy and finance, and that's a major job to make sure these policies are in place, because if they're not there, they can't move forward.
Amen.
Amen.
It could probably do some simplification, too.
Ms. Owens? We're voting on paper.
Yes.
Before we bring it up for discussion at our next workshop.
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair of the chair. And advised by our attorney of the previous motion, we'll just sit there until we bring it back up at our next meeting. I'll be, Ms. Bush?
Um, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the second semester bell schedules for each school.
Heard the recommendation from Ms. Bush, and you have a bell schedule before you. I'll pay a motion before you.
I'll make that motion that we set the bell schedules for the following schools.
Motion by Ms. Owens, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Justice. Any discussion on the bell schedule?
These are basically the same as the first part of the year. Thank you.
Any other question?
Off stage.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair of the chair. I'll see, second semester outfield teachers.
I'd like the board, I recommend that the board approve the second semester outfield teachers.
Heard the recommendation from Ms. Bush, and you have a list in front of you. Any kind of motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the list of outfield teachers for the second semester two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Motion by Ms. Owens, do we have a second? Second, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know we just hired one of these people last month, and that person is outfield, and I've discussed this before and didn't have any success, but I would like to know whom we're voting on as teachers and what are their qualifications, because I'm voting on one name that I don't know who they are, what field they're in, and I would like to know something about the teachers that are teaching our children. And if we're gonna teach, I mean, if we're gonna hire somebody out of the field right off the bat, why don't we look for somebody that is qualified in that field to hire? So, that's my comment.
Any other discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Chair of the chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be, out of county, out of state students.
Okay, you have a list of, uh, the secondary and leading Holmes County, fourteen county and two leading, uh, uh, communities.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Colmets, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion on the out of county, out of state students? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Chair of the chair. Thank you. Out of seven, I consented agenda, I'm paying a motion to approve our workshop and regular session minutes from twelve sixteen fourteen. I'm about to treat, treat.
First trip, Holmes County High School, they're banned to Detroit, our ban, except every year, the February fifth, it's a sale. Uh, Paunson High School, the eighth through the tenth of February, the F.L.A. trip to the state, the capital. Bethany High School, March thirteenth, fifth grade, uh, they're going to Saint Augustine. So, I was gonna approve these trips.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, do we have a motion? Will approve. Motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Chair of the chair. Thank you. Now we'll pay a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand fourteen, December sixteenth meeting, agenda minutes.
I move we approve the, uh, minutes from December sixteenth, twenty fourteen, uh, regular session meeting. Motion by Mr. Justice, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Chair of the chair. Thank you. Personnel action, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, is my recommendation that follow me approved. Hire Mr. Kirkland, a military teacher, B.E.S., Jeffrey Bass, ten-month custodian, Popper Springs, Ben Jurely, twelve-month custodian, Bethlehem, Brenda Hudson, lunchroom worker at B.M.S., middle school, transfer Shane Bush, teacher in the gap, to ag teacher, Holmes County High School, amend the ending date of medical leave, absence on Mark Ryan, two six ten fifteen, approve medical leave, absence on Missa Lot, beginning two twelve fifteen, ending three twenty fifteen, approve medical leave, absence on Brenda Meadows, Popper Springs teacher from January fourteenth through June the tenth, accept resignation from a point on following, Jeanette Skeetok, custodian Bethlehem High School, effective, uh, January fifth, fifteen this year, Mr. Chad Green, ag teacher, Holmes County High School, effective January sixteenth this year.
Heard the personal recommendation from the superintendent, do we have a motion? I move we approve. Motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion?
I guess I'd like to ask, um, old Shane Bush leaving the gap, is there anyone there to set his place?
We're looking for a, for a, according to you, more advertising for him. But right now, we don't have anybody out to say.
What's your name, sir?
He's social studies right now. Um, he'll take the test for ag.
And what would be the certification for the gap? What would be the qualification?
Anything, so, social studies may have sites. We'd like to have somebody all subject area certified here, but we don't, but we are working on that right now. Um, the gap right now is running extension to middle school, whatever, that's working out. Especially, it's most of the middle school, these kids are there anyway, so, that's the vast majority of them.
So as far as the gap, all of those teachers are, none of those are out of field that we have at the gap?
Uh, the way we do the gap, the students use virtual learning most of the time, and they're, they're actually attached to a teacher that is certified in that field, via electronics. And those teachers, the gap facilitate, have the gap to sell. Guess we've been doing it for the last several years, so. It's just, it's just one room of one building, so you can't do a whole lot with it.
How long is it getting there?
Uh, for last year and this year. All year last year and the first half of this year. We were not anticipating the ag teacher, Holmes County High School, he, he got a job with, um, husband bar carving stuff, so, he's got a professional.
And we didn't have any certified people applying to that job that would've been certified in ag.
I think so. That's a fairly hard one to find. The national turn that proven to one or two.
Any other discussion, comments? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Colmets?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Chair of the chair.
Second, uh, the recommendation that you approve the suspension without pay on the service teacher, then January ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Heard the recommendation, superintendent, do we have a motion? Will we approve?
I should, I should be honest, I'm gonna say.
Can this be discussed, or we have to have a second?
We can have a second to discuss it. Would you like the second in the course of discussion?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Owens, and now let it for discussion.
Well, I'd just like to say for the record, I am for our teachers, and from what I hear tonight, I don't know the teacher, but everything sounds like she is a good teacher, and, well, I, we gotta keep the good teachers. And, uh, I wouldn't think we would have some kind of a hearing in front of the board to discuss it, to, to let us know what's going on. We don't know, except what you told us tonight, so.
Well, um, I haven't been able to say what he said. He, uh, admit, I'm a kid, a later time maybe, but, uh, he's the one administrative personnel I don't, we don't.
I, I will say that the policy states that suspension with pay does not warrant a hearing, without pay, the teacher can request a hearing.
And that's what I'm saying.
Before you vote.
Later date.
And if that, then the suspension can be appealed or withheld.
I have not, you know, heard anything except what I've been told. Ms. Stevenson hasn't talked to me.
Sir.
So, you know, I, I've, I've got to go with what the superintendent recommended.
So she can have a hearing if we, um, if we pass on this, she can have a hearing, um, and, like, you know, we, we've heard, um, Mr., you know, Mr. Johnson was not here, would he be allowed to be at the hearing inside a gap? As a board, we would hear the whole, you know, everybody.
Both sides would present, facts, both sides of facts would present.
And at that point, if the suspension was appealed, we could go forward like it is, if it was overturned, that she would be reinstated, you know, with the pay in the back there.
That's really the only action that's on.
Sir.
If, if we uphold the suspension tonight, she can request a hearing. At that point, that's what your both sides of the issue.
We can overturn this.
If we decide to do that, then she will be paid back then. And we'll let her move from the bottom.
But if we don't, if we don't uphold the suspension.
The letter, uh, you can't really, like, file the, you can list that tag. This is all state statute stuff.
You can vote now, no, right now, if you wanted to, too, yes? That is an option, yes?
But you heard one side.
As Mr. Colmets was about to ask, if the suspension is not upheld tonight, what happens?
About the tag?
She, she, assuming it would be reinstated if you didn't go along with the recommendation. We'll certainly look back at the policy to make sure that was covered.
But we won't get the here.
You're not gonna hear nothing tonight, if that's your question.
I guess the question is, is, is what, that's the hearing. The suspension is not upheld tonight, is the hearing foregone?
To go against the recommendation, which much I have before you, you have to have a legal or ethical reason for it, okay? You heard one side tonight.